I've been away for a while. The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, October 22, 2018, will be called to order at 7:00 P.M. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation which I'll be giving, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I ask that we take this moment to remember the reasons why we all do what we do in this hallowed hall, day in and day out, as stewards of public trust. Let us remember to speak and move in truth and decency and closure to our higher purpose, that we work together to co-create an inclusive city so that young people know who they are, where their ancestors are, why they are loved, and what special gifts they bring to Annapolis and to the world. Let our words and our actions align to reflect the promises we've made to this great city of Annapolis, to leave it better than when we found it. And finally, let us remember to always do what is right and what is just for the lasting benefit of the least among us, so that their lives might be just a little bit better because of our efforts here. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the room.
Mayor Buckley?
Here.
Alderwoman Tenny?
Here.
Alderman Ham?
Here.
Alderman Mel Charles? Alderman from Lanesen?
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Present.
Alderman Henson?
Present.
Alderman Savage?
Present.
Alderman Arnett?
Present.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, Environmental Matters Committee, we met on the 17th, and we spoke about the forest conservation and loss ordinance. We did end up giving that ordinance a favorable recommendation, and we heard from staff, from Chestnut Bay Foundation, South River Federation, as well as local developers. And, let's see, I'll give you a full report when that comes before the council for a final vote. In terms of, we also recommended favorably for the lease at Truxton Park and for Kayak Annapolis. And also, we discussed the City of Annapolis Stormwater Regulations. We did not take action on that, that's been postponed for the time being. Our next meeting will be November 21st at 3:00 P.M.
Thank you. Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome back. The Economic Matters Committee meeting met on last, well, two Thursdays ago, October 11th at 4:00 P.M. We recommended favorably the reappointment of Ms. Kim Finch to the Historic Preservation Commission, which is on the agenda tonight. We also discussed a piece of legislation, O-4018, and its accompanying resolution, R-4218, vacant non-residential buildings to essentially do a registration of vacant commercial buildings and so forth. We had a very lively discussion with Director of Economic Development or Manager, Hollis Minor, Hope Stewart, and Eric Evans of Annapolis Partnership, and we decided to postpone that so that we can do a little bit more work on it.
Alderman Peon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Audit Committee met last Monday, right here in the Chambers Chambers, and I'd love saying that. We went over a number of items that, and financial issues that face the city at the moment. We are proceeding with, hopefully, an audit shortly. We're drawing up, the city manager, excuse me, is drawing up an RFP for an audit of the Recreation and Parks Department. We talked about what we will do after we get the first audit done. We talked about a number of other items. We will be meeting again on the third Monday of November at 8:00 a.m., right here in the Chambers Chambers.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee also took up the issue of the kayak lease at Truxton Park, and it generated a surprising amount of dialogue, because there are other vendors who also are interested in wanting to be there. And it raises the issue that I think we need to consider as we go down the road about how we allocate city property to various vendors, particularly when there's more than one vendor that is wanting to use the same space. The kayak people have been there for 12 years, and it provides a city in the, I mean, a service from the private sector that is very beneficial to our recreational uses. So, we recommend it favorably, but we now have another vendor that we're trying to find space for, and I think this is going to continue to occur. We have desirable space, but it's limited, and we have a lot of people that want to use it. So, I thought I would make note of that. We also approved the emergency procurement, we have recommended approval of the emergency procurement, so that we have something that comes up, we don't have to hunt up a quorum of the council, we can empower the city manager to authorize procurements on the spot.
Alderman Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing and Human Welfare Committee met on October 16th, before the committee was O-3318, Commercial Recycling. We had the benefit of having the ordinance sponsor at the committee meeting. We did review it. It looks like it's made, the purpose is to bring it in line with other waste collection ordinances that the city has, to make sure that it has the same collection time, to make sure that it has the same signs, so it's just bringing our recycling online with the other ones as well. It was recommended favorably for the council. The next meeting of, next meeting of the Housing and Human Welfare Committee is November 20, 2018, at 6:00 P.M. in Council Chambers.
Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rules and City Government Committee met not once, not twice, but three times during the month of October. We took up the appointments and reappointments of several candidates for the Arts and Public Places Committee, all of whom were sworn in at the last meeting. We also approved the reappointment of Robert Wallman to the Planning Commission. Legislation, we took up O-818, which was the Adequate Facilities Legislation. It came out with a favorable recommendation of a two-to-one vote. We also took up O-1418, Redevelopment Review Process Amendments, and it did come out with a favorable recommendation. You don't know who the sponsor of that legislation would be, right you? And then we attempted to get to O-19, which is the Zoning Code Updates and Amendments, and O-37, the Ethics Code, and we postponed action on both of those, because we ran out of time. So, they will be on the agenda for the next meeting, which is November 13th, 4:00 p.m. here in Council Chambers. Thank you.
Alderman Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee did not meet last month due to not having a quorum because of the Maryland Municipal League Convention. However, we will meet in November, and on the docket is, drumroll please, the Adequate Facilities Legislation, which we will be prepared to take, take a motion on. Thank you.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met on October 1st, 6:00 P.M. here in Council Chambers. The business before the committee was ID-27818, Annapolis Police Department update, the new community outreach programs and the crime statistics. Current status is that this informational item was presented. Next item was ID-27918, Annapolis Fire Department update, the opiate status, grant to purchase, fire extinguisher training, status of projects, and the Chief Steel Award will be presented at the next City Council meeting. The current status of this, the informational item was presented. Next item was ID-28118, Office of Emergency Management update, new grant funding, and the opioid programs, and this informational item was presented. Legislation before the committee, O-3618, Public Peace, Public Peace Noise Prohibition, for the purpose of making technical corrections in City of Annapolis environmental motor vehicle noise standards. And the status of this was that the committee recommended this favorably. The next meeting of the Public Safety Standing Committee will be on Monday, November 5th, 2018, at 6:00 P.M., and we do have a packed agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob, for the reports. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
Okay, the first person signed up to speak is Robert Eads. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members.
Yeah, it happened tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. How, how you doing? I'm here looking for some respect, some respect. I'm standing here tonight, or I post here where I live at, I'm sorry, 32 Pleasant Street in Annapolis, Maryland. I'm nervous, because I wrote it down on paper this time, I usually come straight from the heart, but I wanted to get this one right. I'm standing here today in complaint of the gentrification that I have witnessed going on in this city. I'm sick and tired of being tired, when false leadership such as Trudy McFaul come into our communities to help, promising to help. And it's like the old African saying, "When the Christians came into our country, they had the Bible in their hand. When they left, they had the land and we had the Bible." That's what's happening with that. She just came into our community and fall promising to help, and all she did was brought up properties. So, I'm just frustrated, such as shyster lawyers like Scott McMullin coming into our community promising this and that, and when he lost the race, he blamed it on the black community and refused to pay the workers. And then you came, Mr. Mayor, into our community, passing out hot dogs and hamburgers, talking about the good old days of Cars Beach as a platform to get blacks to believe that you would make our lives more inclusive in the city. You hired a few educated blacks to make it seem like you are concerned. We have not seen any results or changes in our neighborhoods. It is at this point that I have decided to push a black agenda, to put in place blacks who are concerned with our problems, because the people you have hired to represent the black community have no connection to the people with the real problems. Before anyone says that this is prejudice or a racial move, there are other nationalities across this country that have established political agendas to address their needs across this country, such as Chinatown, Little Italy's, Germantown, Korean Towns, Pakistani areas, et cetera, all established to uplift their nationality. Since you are not from this country, let me give you a little history, Mr. Mayor, and then if you want me to explain how this all comes into connection afterwards, I can do that too. In 1619, African, African blacks were brought to America and bonded, sold, sold to Joint Jamestown Colony, and, and before the Maryland colonies came into existence in 1634, newly arrived European whites and African blacks intermingled and socialized reasonably well. In 1638, however, the Maryland colonies issued a public edict encouraging separation of the races. It became the basis for public policy for race relations in America. The Council for, for the Maryland, Maryland Council edict stated, "Neither existing black population, their descendants, nor any other black shall be permitted to enjoy the fruits of white society." The doctrine was written and issued that blacks would remain subordinate, non-competitive, non, non-compensated for workforce. That public edict later became more commonly known as the Doctrine of Exclusion. Around the mid-1660s, various colonies picked up on Maryland edict and/or the Doctrine of Exclusion, and expanded it into enslavement laws of people of African descent. Once established, the laws became the basis for national public policy on the exploitation of blacks that was passed on from generation to generation through social customs and public law. The Slave Code of 1705 required all individual churches, businesses, organizations, schools, and all levels of government to treat and justify and enforce the status of the blacks as insubordinate, including non-competitive, non, excuse me, non-competitive, non-state management for a workforce of public comfort and wealth build, building for white society. The public remains in effect until the 60s. I heard the beep a go off, that's why I stopped, there was another colony. But I'm here to say that ain't nothing changed, it's the same game with a different name. They don't do it by coloring them or they do it by economics. If you make this much money, you live in this neighborhood. If you poor, you live in Robinwood, Newtown, 20, and all those, we still not benefiting, you have not included. For right now, we don't even want segregation, we don't want separation, we want inclusion. Conclusion to the promise that was made to us in the 14th Amendment. You said you was gonna make some changes, Mr. Mayor, ain't nothing happening in our communities. Nothing happening. That's what I need to say.
Alderman Pendell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Eads?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you remember what information I provided to you the last time you were here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm not gonna reiterate that, but I'm gonna include it in my testimony or to my response to you right now, so what I said the last time, I'm gonna include that now. And I'm, I'm sticking with that today. I had several meetings concerning just what you're talking about, and we're making lots of progress. In fact, I had a meeting on Friday about some things you've been talking about. And so, we're moving, we're moving in the right direction. It takes a little bit of time, and people do need a little time to move on. We've been under this administration 10 months, and I think we've made tremendous strides in the hiring, as well as the other initiatives that we've put forth, whether it's through the school system, whether it's through the Health Department, people are working feverishly, and I see that. I, I'm not speaking for what somebody has told me, I'm speaking for what exactly I have seen with my own two eyes and heard with my own two ears. So, while I respect what you have to say tonight, there are things that being, that are being put in place, if not already in place, to address exactly what you're talking about. Thank you.
You finished?
Yes, sir, for now.
Every time I come down here, not only with this mayor, with the previous mayor, and I say what I need to say, you, Mr. Pendell, take up, why can't he talk? Why every time they ride on your back and you speak up and tell me about what you and your colleagues have done, which I respect, and I'm not saying that you don't, but I'm dressed this to the mayor, and every time I do that, you speak up and take up for them. The mayor needs to speak up and, and address problems, he know what him and I talked about, and things that I talked about, small, simple things that ain't been moved on. The mayor needs to get off of your back and stand up and walk on his own. And, and as an educator, as an educator, you see the problems that are not addressed. And I'll give you a small, simple thing, you know as an educator, every student that come past you, you know they're not gonna be college material. You know every student that come past you are not gonna really graduate. But my, my concern is, they took masonry, carpentry, plumbing, electrical, all of these things out of school. So, a person who's not the brightest bug in, 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 in the, in the pack, still had a chance to make an honest, good living. That's not happening. That's not happening. So, when that black man can't provide for his family, and that woman go to the social service to get some help, the first thing they tell her, "If a man living in your house, you can't get no help." They break up the black family. I've been coming down here trying and trying to mingle, but I'm tired. I'm ready to push a black agenda for people who gonna try to uplift us, conclude the promise that was made to us. You're an educator, you know what I'm talking about. You know that every student that comes, I was one, I was one. I, I never was the smartest knife in, I'm the sharpest knife in the drawer. But in order, when I started having children or whatever, and I started seeing what I need, I was forced into the street to provide for my children. But if I had been given some type of training, when I, when I was there in school, some type of skill, I can bet you I wouldn't have went that route. Because you see that little girl that just left out here, that big hug and kiss she gave me? I'd feel good that she look up to her father. My oldest two boys lost me for a few years. So, what I'm trying to say, you know, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And, and it's keep waiting for it to come, and keep waiting for it to come, it, it's past wait, we need action.
I know what you're saying, Mr. Eads, and, and if you heard what I said, first of all, we're under this administration, and everything that occurs under this administration is under this administration, whatever is done or not done. Number two, I hear exactly what you're saying, and if you heard what I said, I said, I had a meeting on Friday to talk about exactly what you're talking about. Had, wait, let me finish, had a meeting today, today, to talk about the, the trades that you're talking about. There was a gentleman in the room, and I'm not gonna tell you who it was, because everybody knows him well. We talked about trades and what we were gonna do. So, everything cannot be revealed at one time, we don't wanna reveal things that aren't in place, but today, this afternoon, there was a meeting concerning exactly what you're talking about. And I'm gonna reiterate again, had a meeting on Friday to talk about exactly what you're talking about. So, we will get back to you regarding that.
That's you, but I'm gonna say this one, so that I'm sure that you heard what I said.
What you said?
Why can't the mayor speak instead of you having to answer for him? He knows the conversations that him and I had. He, I told the mayor, I said, "It would be good if you just wrote a letter, just wrote a letter, and tell the black community what you intend or attempting to do." I didn't say what you gonna do, 'cause when you come in here, you got a lot of things, what you gonna attempt to do? Let us know that the cab drivers that I got to get their customers to vote for him, the neighbors and the doors that I knocked on to get the people to vote for him, they looking at me for results, and I can't even get him to write a, a letter stating where his intentions are. And then when I come here, 'cause I got a lot of people watching tonight, like I did last time, 'cause they wanted to know why the mayor gave me the finger, just in case you don't understand, is when, listen to me, listen to me, in my community, when you tell a person something that you're gonna do or attempt to do, and then when they call you on it, and you look them dead in their face, and don't give them the response, that's like giving them the finger. Just like I'm saying right now, you're looking dead at me, and Mr. Pendell Charles is answering questions that I shot at you. Mr. Mayor, you, you, you know?
I don't know what I can tell you, buddy.
I truly believe you don't know, but you know what we talked about, and I truly believed in you.
I know, and I know what this office is doing, and it's more than anyone's done in a long, long time.
Well, we just ain't seen it in my community.
Okay, it takes some time.
And if you gonna do small things, I ain't actually do no leaps and bounds, but there's small things that could give people hope that you really attempted to make us inclusive.
Yep.
And, and it's just a shame. It's just a shame.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, Mr. Eads, I'm the educator on the committee.
And you know what I'm talking about.
I know exactly what you're talking about. And Alderwoman Pendell Charles is working on her efforts, and there are some other efforts afoot that will speak to how we prepare kids after they graduate from high school, 'cause I couldn't agree with you more. You know, our society has decided that everybody must go to college.
Ain't gonna happen.
And realistically, you're right. Realistically, everybody isn't going to go to college. And we do need those laborers, those people who do the bricklaying and the masonry work and the woodworking and, you know, all the things that our vocational schools provide.
That you can make a good living off of.
Absolutely, absolutely, and better than we as teachers were making. And so, there is an initiative afoot to make sure that when young people graduate from high school, they have something to do, that they don't resort to whatever they can do to make a living. And in most cases, those things are illegal. So, we know that the school system is not doing the job that they need to be doing to make sure that every kid graduates with a vocation of some sort if they don't go to college. So, do understand that there is a movement afoot to make sure that our school system prepares everyone to become a viable member of our community. There's another initiative afoot that the mayor is going to be a part of, he's probably not fully aware yet, that will give our partners the ability to create a center in our city, so that those people who have already graduated can still get a skill, can still focus, be trained, and some opportunity to make a living. So, there are initiatives afoot. They are not ready to be announced publicly yet, but no one is ignoring the problem. We see the same thing you see, and we're not happy with it either. So, thank you for bringing this to light and for giving us an opportunity to say a little bit about the fact that we're not happy about it either.
Yeah, 'cause y'all, as long as you been on the board, Mr. Peon, y'all know how long I've been coming down here trying to save young children's lives. I'm getting older, I'm having health problems, I need to see some fruit. Thank you.
Mr. Eads, one other thing, you know that we have to negotiate with the Board of Ed because we don't control them.
I know, but you can start making a big fuss, somebody will listen.
Absolutely, we can.
You start some smoking, there people know fire somewhere.
Absolutely.
You start the smoking, I got the parents behind me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. I'm still gonna call you for lunch.
Excuse me?
I'm still gonna call you for lunch.
You told me that.
I called you, you know I called you. You didn't answer, I'll call you again.
I was still ticked off.
I know.
I just didn't answer his phone.
Thanks, Robert. And next speaker is Chris.
Good evening, Mayor Buckley and Council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I just wanted to thank a couple of alderwomen who came to the Ward One Picnic two weeks ago, it was really a great success, and we thank you for attending. There were some beautiful words spoken tonight by you, Mayor Buckley, and the invocation, and I appreciate that. But words are what I'm talking about here. Back in April, you bought a big tent, bought everybody under the big tent down at Back in April, you bought a big tent, bought everybody under the big tent down at City Dock for Fred Kent, a world-renowned urban planner, to come talk to the citizens here and get our ideas. And I repeatedly asked for the notes from that event, and there are no notes, from what I understand. I asked for the notes and in openness and transparency, I was thankful to get a call back. I asked Ms. Smith two times last week, and I asked the city attorney this morning, and he got back to me right away, thank you very much for that, from Mr. Melnick. But then they asked me to file a Freedom of Information Act, which I thought was kinda, you know, we're talking about, you know, your next-door neighbors here. I don't think we should have to go to a Freedom of Information Act, but I filed one. And it seems like there probably aren't any notes. So my couple of questions for you, Mr. Mayor, is who paid Fred Kent and how much did they pay him? So that's number one. Number two, who paid for the tent? So I just wanna know the accounting for it, and I asked the other council members to please ask the mayor, maybe privately tomorrow, you know, offline, what it really cost and why we don't have any notes. Tomorrow, actually, the ULI is gonna come into these chambers to discuss with the citizens some opportunities at City Dock. So that's why we're asking for these notes. I mean, I think it's fair enough, don't you? I think we paid for them, right?
The city didn't pay for it. Harvey Blonder and Fred and Peter Fillet, they financed the tent.
Okay. So are we owed the notes?
I think that notes are accessible. I'll get them for you wherever they are.
Well, I mean, please do, because we have some meetings coming right down the pike tomorrow. That's why we've been asking for them.
No secrets, you know, we absolutely...
But if there are no notes, they're secret, Gavin. I mean, it's, if it isn't there, it isn't there.
I'm assuming that there are notes? I don't have them, but I'll...
Yeah, there are no notes, well. If you have them, please send them to me tomorrow, that'd be great.
Okay.
Another issue I just wanted to bring up before the council is I live in, down in the residential district. It's C1. I'm sure you all know what C1 means, it's residential. But there's been an onslaught, like Mr. Eads said, the gentrification of the community. Well, not just the gentrification of the community, actually, the commercialization of C1 is going on. And that's what you all oughta really be thinking about. And I know there are Airbnbs in all of your districts. There's a lot of money to be had. First question for you is are they legal? Are they? So I asked the city attorney to get back with us about are they legal? And I asked the finance committee, and you, Mayor Buckley, you raised my taxes so nicely this year, I appreciate that. How come you don't tax those guys who come to town? You know, downtown on Prince George Street and King George Street, there are Airbnbs renting for $1,500 a night. Fleet Street is practically empty on Sunday night, when everyone goes home after a football game. Nobody lives on Fleet Street. The African-American community used to live downtown. And I know Mr. Eads knows that, Ms. Finlayson, Ms. Pendel Charles, you know that. That's a fact. It's not just gentrification, now it's commercialization. And there's a big pot of money out there. So I asked the council, in all your wisdom, I mean, it's a pass-through tax, and it's fair enough. I mean, these people are coming to town willing to pay 1,500 bucks or 700 bucks a night? You think they don't mind paying 18% for tax? It's understood, and it goes, Airbnb met with the State House up there, and they said, hey, we'll do whatever your community wants. So I encourage you and ask you and implore you to go ahead and ask Airbnb to collect that money for us. And also, on the safety side of it, please inspect those facilities so that we don't have somebody, you know, get hurt and we're not talking about this Monday morning, okay? I thank you all for your time.
We agree with you, and we're chasing that down as well.
Well, I appreciate that.
Alderman Finlayson?
You can lower our taxes.
I guess two years ago, maybe three years ago, we began, Alderman Arnett, Alderman Peon, and I began meeting with community leaders, particularly bed and breakfast folks, because they raised the concern. And we have any number of articles from all over the world, not just all over the country, about the problems that Airbnbs create in communities. We had legislation, it wasn't obviously ready for prime time, and the community rose up against us because of that legislation. We are back on track to begin meeting again. I've sent out an invite because we do need to address the concerns you've raised. The city manager, I know, is looking at how to tax those entities, but we're also looking at how, public safety perspective.
Sure.
Because, well, I will just say, we had attempted to put some things in place to make sure that they're not, you know, there are not too many of them. You know, we had planned to do one per block face only, you know, meaning one on a block, one house on a block could be an Airbnb. But we put some other things in the legislation. We're gonna rework it, and it's gonna come back relatively soon.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I don't think it's a real difficult thing to figure out, and I think somebody on the city staff should sit down and do the math. Do look at Airbnb online and see how many there are, where they are, knock on the doors. They're non-residents, they're people that live in Hawaii. I mean, this is a joke, there's nobody lives downtown with their kids anymore. It's true. Everybody used to raise their kids downtown, they don't. So anyway, you all know it.
Well, we did have city staff working with us, and back then there were 160-them, if I remember correctly, and that was several years ago. I'm sure that number has increased significantly since then.
Our small group looked at it, and it's over $500,000 in missed revenue for the city. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that effort that Alderwoman Finlayson mentioned got sidetracked for two years because we were waiting on state legislation that never occurred. That's beyond the pale, and you're right, it's time to get back on this. It's not just the C1, it's across the city. It's a very hot topic in my ward as well, Ward Eight. So, and there's a very active core of people who keep sending us all kinds of information. D.C. just passed good legislation. I think you and Fred and I need to make an appointment to sit back down, because it was all there. We were gonna make them register, they have to collect the tax, the hotel tax and the sales tax. So we just need to dig that up and get back on it. But you're right for giving us a little boost, we needed...
Yeah, well, thank you very much for listening tonight.
Alderwoman Tierney? Yeah, I know I'm treading on thin ice here, because I do own and operate a licensed bed and breakfast, but I just wanna just highlight the point that Chris made is, I walked last night down my neighborhood and I counted 22 houses with their lights off, no one home. And he's exactly right, we're losing our neighborhoods. And I just, I have to say that at a risk of, I know, I know my ethics issue here, but it's not that, it's the community fabric. It is gone, it is totally gone. And I just wanna thank Chris for bringing that up. It's very sad when you see lights out and a keypad on people's houses. In a C1 district, which, if you look up the definition of a C1 district, it's protected residence. They didn't even want licensed bed and breakfasts, and now we have these other things, and it's out of control. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker is Michelle Fisher.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I have to confess, I didn't realize I was signing up to speak when I signed that sheet. I thought I was just signing to be attend. But since I did, I am a docent at Historic Annapolis. I've been there over a year and work part-time at Irish Traditions. And so I'm very passionate about the history of this town, and I love sharing it with the public and our visitors. And having been gone from Maryland for about 20 years, out in L.A., and I just came back recently, two years ago, I guess, and to see all the more tourists that we have now that we've never had before. I mean, we've had visitors come in from Iceland and Germany and, you know, all over the world. And I think it's fabulous. But I just was a little concerned with all the developments around the City Dock, like the new, there's a new structure going up on the left side, I guess, of it. And then I know there's talk of a hotel with underground parking garage up front. And I was just wondering, is there any, is it gonna be, is any of this development going to still protect the historic integrity of the town? And, you know, the St. Clair Wright and Historic Annapolis work so hard to protect. 'Cause we're a unique, this is a unique city. I think people come here because of its colonial, that we have more colonial buildings still here than anywhere in the whole of the United States. That's what makes Annapolis unique, and I think that's what's drawing the tourism. I think tourism has just skyrocketed because of that. So I just hate to, you know, we don't wanna lose it. That's all.
Thank you. So we are, the ULI study starts tomorrow, you can participate in that if you like. We're looking for as much contribution from the public as possible, so it'd be great if you can come along the next few days in the chambers here.
What's the time of day is it?
I have to look up the schedule.
Oh, 5:30?
5:30 tomorrow. Yep.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak today? Seeing no motion, we declare the public hearing portion closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
Thank you all for being here this evening. I would like to extend my sincerest thank you to Alderwoman Shanika Henson for stepping up and acting as mayor while I took an unexpected break to visit my mom in Australia. My mom says thank you. I appreciate knowing the city was in good hands, and I understand she took over the boat show and passed a few pieces of legislation while I was gone. Thank you. On my way over to the other side of the world, I stopped in San Francisco at the invitation of the National League of Cities for a quick 48-hour meeting with fellow mayors. We learned about ways cities are adapting to the changing world. Autonomous vehicles, green roofs, bikes, electric scooters, which is the next thing we'll be dealing with. The City of Annapolis has also been invited to participate in the Mayor's Institute on City Design in Miami in November as well. The institute is a leadership initiative of the National Endowment of the Arts in partnership with the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Eight cities from across the country were chosen for this opportunity to learn more about transforming communities through design. This is the brainchild of former Charleston Mayor Joe Riley. Last week, we hosted a team from the U.S. Conference of Mayors. We all agreed that the best site for this city's technical workshop was a site that includes City Dock, Main Street, Hillman Garage, and our flood mitigation project. This workshop in Miami is a huge opportunity for the city to receive guidance from nationally acclaimed experts in design and development, all of which is at no cost to the City of Annapolis and the taxpayers. They will help find solutions to our most critical planning and design challenges. This is a tremendous opportunity for the City of Annapolis, and I look forward to briefing both the members of the city council as well as our citizens. These two visits with mayors from throughout the country and their visions, along with the expertise advice we will receive from tomorrow and Wednesday's Urban Land Institute's technical advisory panel will help us achieve one of the most important goals, stimulating the city's economy and determining the most appropriate course of action for City Dock. I would like to thank Historic Annapolis Foundation, Preservation Maryland, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation for funding the ULI study. Throughout the day tomorrow and Wednesday, a panel of experts from the world of architecture, transportation, preservation, and economic development will speak with stakeholders from across the city, including each ward, business, community leaders, environmental and public art advocates, tourism experts, and more. Combine all these recent expertise and analysis with the existing information from the City Dock Master Plan, the Cultural Resource Study, and feedback from our City Dock discussion this past summer, we will have an abundance of guidance to move forward with finally reimagining our City Dock, which we have been talking about for a while. Again, I would like to thank Historic Annapolis Foundation, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, Mayor's Institute of City Design for their continued support and energy. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include the appointment of AP-38-18, the reappointment of Kim Finch to the Historic Preservation Commission, a second reader O-33-18, Commercial Recycling, and that is the end of the consent calendar items.
Move approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, consent calendar approved. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yeah. Mayor Buckley?
Yes?
Alderman Peon?
Yes.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
That's fine, aye.
The ayes have it, okay. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is legislative action, beginning with reconsideration of ordinance O-22-18, food handling establishments, polystyrene food service products prohibition, for the purpose of prohibiting the sale and use of expanded polystyrene foam products at food service businesses located in the city, providing certain definitions and providing for a penalty for violations.
Is there a motion to reconsider O-22-18 on second reader?
So moved, second.
Second, okay. Discussion, Alderman Savage?
Yeah, thank you, just to provide some explanation behind this. So it was just due to oversight, this was actually passed, we're missing a key provision, and the key provision is one that restricts the geographic applicability of this. Essentially just limiting it to only things that are packaged and sold in the city. So this would make it consistent with all the other prohibitions, bans across the state. So this is just a correction, 'cause we didn't want it to apply to goods that are packaged outside the city in Pennsylvania or wherever and sold in our stores. This is only things that are packaged on-site. So this, essentially what I'm, the move, what I'm, the motion is to amend it as it was adopted. So it's basically a motion to amend it on third reader as adopted. And this would insert a new amendment number one, which is kinda like the Fourth Amendment, which essentially just strikes the one paragraph in question and replaces it with the text that puts the geographic restriction back in there. So if there are any questions, or I know the City Attorney, the Office of Law, put this together for me. So thank you for that.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yeah, could we have some clarification? I know that we got a letter from the county, and maybe this is directed to our city attorney, that spoke to their inspections. Is this related to their ability or their... I think this legislation was going to ask the county health department to inspect for us. But, well, can you explain what...
It is asking...
May I?
Sure.
I don't want us to ignore the advice of our city attorney, which we...
I think the issue was resolved. Our office did receive a letter from Nancy Dude, the county attorney. Nancy Dude expressed concerns about the manner in which the city was planning on enforcing the polystyrene ban, given the fact that the county's polystyrene legislation did not pass. This came in last Thursday, and the last city council meeting, the city council voted to approve the legislation, and as you requested, you indicated a need to make sure that we had something in writing from the county that indicated that it was on board with whatever the manner of enforcing... board with whatever the manner of enforcement that the city was planning to have and any involvement the county was going to have, that the county was on board with that. So then, having received that communication from Nancy Dude, and the county attorney, asking me to respond and indicate what the status was with respect to our enforcement, uh, and given the fact that this meeting was really the last opportunity to have any reconsideration on the prior vote from the previous meeting, uh, I, I alerted the city councils to the request, and I responded to the county attorney and indicated to the county attorney that, uh, that it was my understanding that the offi- that, that the county health officials will conduct their normal health inspections under this, under this, uh, the county code and the provisions that apply in the city as they relate to the county code applicable in the city. In conducting those inspections, if they came upon a situation where they saw there was a violation of the polystyrene ban, they then would notice, notify our Office of Environmental Policy, uh, at which point the Office of Environmental Policy would take over, go to the site, see if they observe a violation. If they did observe a violation, they'd be issuing the notice of violation or citation. They would be working with our office to enforce the city code provision related to the polystyrene ban. So that way, we eliminate some of the concerns that we've been addressing in the past regarding not, uh, not having our own city employees working with the city attorney's office, a multitude of issues that stem from that, that the county also expressed concerns about if, in fact, they were going to be needing to serve as a witness, uh, for any violations that were found for the city code that were not applicable to the county code. With that explanation, uh, of, of the manner in which we were planning to proceed and the limited involvement of county health inspectors, um, in providing that information that they might happen upon in enforcing their county code in the city and relaying that information for enforcement, uh, to the Office of Environmental Policy, uh, the county attorney indicated that they were comfortable, uh, with that method of enforcement, and, uh, and thanked me for my, my response and indicated that we could proceed.
Did I understand you to say that the county legislation to ban styrofoam is, did not pass?
It passed, but it was vetoed.
There, there is...
Well, then it didn't pass. It was vetoed by the county executive.
Without getting into semantics, there is not a county code provision...
Okay.
...that, uh, for a polystyrene ban.
Okay. Um, the other part of my question has to do with the question that Alderman Peon raised about the, I guess, constitutionality of them monitoring, or us monitoring styrofoam being brought in from the county to our city.
That, that essentially is one of the reasons for Alderman Savage's amendment today, request for reconsideration by, to add that amendment. Originally, uh, there was, our advice of our office was to have the provision read the way that now will read if his, um, if his amendment is passed. Um, we, we, we did have concerns about the extraterritorial effect of the legislation without the language that we're now talking about adding back in, um, and both in the terms of it being a local law and in terms of the Interstate Commerce Clause, and, uh, and it did appear, uh, to, to both us as well as other jurisdictions that have enacted similar legislation, that, uh, that the balancing test involved with looking at the benefits to the locality versus the discriminatory or adverse impact it might have on interstate commerce weighed against, uh, the, uh, that, the provision of the ordinance without this amendment that we're now discussing, um, to, uh, to move to approve, to make it a part of legislation.
So this move to reconsider corrects that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alderman Arnett?
Uh, yes, this amendment corrects the commerce, uh, coming in from outside the city that we cannot control. So I would, uh, urge that we vote for this change so that we can be legal.
Oh, yeah, that Alderman Peon raised at the meeting.
Can I be on the record for saying Alderman Peon was right?
I know. Well, well, it's, there's a first time for everything.
Question of a Republican, or is that a one person, a Democrat, has...
I think you should reconsider your party.
Okay, all those in favor of the, um, motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt O dash twenty-two dash eighteen on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion on this? So, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O dash twenty-two dash eighteen? That's our...
That's what you said.
Okay, sorry. Sorry. Is there a motion with some...
So moved.
To adopt...
Second.
Let me out of practice, it's a couple of weeks, huh? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt O dash twenty-two dash eighteen as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O dash twenty-two dash eighteen on third reader?
Aye. I mean, so moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Peon?
Aye.
Alderman Pindalchar?
Aye.
Alderman Felason?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
Alderman Terry?
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R dash thirty-one dash eighteen, City Debt and Financial Administration Policies, for the purpose of formally amending and approving the debt and financial administration policies for the City of Annapolis.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt R dash thirty-one dash eighteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Did you want to give some context?
Um, I don't know that I need to give any context. I'll just remind you all that this was presented to the city council at a work session on May seventeenth, I believe. It was presented to the Finance Committee prior to that, and again on June sixth, it's gone before the Financial Advisory Commission. There are, um, three amendments which are on the agenda, so you need to consider those amendments. I ask you to consider those amendments. Um, if you'd like me to go over them, I'd be happy to.
Do you want to go through the amendments?
Yeah, so the first, so quickly, the First Amendment is just a correction. Um, right now, our policy says that bond anticipation notes can only be outstanding for two years, and it should say three years. We have an existing bond anticipation note that has a three-year term. Um, that was oversight on my part, and same thing with Amendment Number Two. We should have included, uh, on page four, line thirty-two, that we can dedicate both general fund balance and other general fund revenue to the capital reserve fund if we so chose, the city council so chose, and then Amendment Number Three is just correcting typographical errors.
Right. Alderman Arnett?
So, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee, uh, reviewed this several times and, uh, the corrections, and we recommend favorably to the council.
Good, good. Alderman Terry?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have a question, um, because of how important this is, and, and thank you so much for all of your work in, in, in doing this and the time it, it took. Um, and my question is, what is the logic in, uh, the review of this policy, uh, I think that you say every four years, uh, in lieu of looking at it perhaps more frequently because of the problem in not having a policy? I just wanted to know your logic in, in why every four years we relook at this and not sooner.
Um, I don't think you'd have any need to look at it any sooner than that. Okay. Um, we have an existing policy that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. Um, I have suggested revisions to that because some of the terminology used in it was eliminated by the Government Accounting Standards Board more than a decade ago. I don't even know how it ended up in the two thousand and fifteen resolution. Um, and then the two thousand and fifteen resolution recommends unassigned general fund balance equal to fifteen percent of government-wide expenses, which is a very unusual measurement in public finance. Um, the water and sewer funds are required to be self-supporting and are because of our revenue bonds, and the solid waste fund is self-supporting, so we don't need general fund reserves to bail out water, sewer, and solid waste. Um, so the financial advisors had recommended we go to twenty percent of general fund balance as our target. I was uncomfortable with that because we do bail out the parking and transportation funds. So in consultation with them, we decided that the most, um, appropriate measurement was fifteen percent of general fund plus parking fund plus transportation fund revenues. And, you know, once we've set that, there's really no reason to revisit it, um, unless we were to think that that policy was inappropriate, but each incoming city council would have an opportunity to look at the debt ratios and decide whether they thought the policies were appropriate or not. Okay. And, and also, as you read through, you have quarterly, the city finance director shall prepare, you know, a report that compares actual revenues and expenditures, so that you do have that. I just wanted to know your logic in that, and thank you very much. You're welcome.
Okay, is there a motion to amend R dash thirty-one dash eighteen on second reader?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to adopt R dash thirty-one dash eighteen as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mayor Buckley?
Yes?
Alderman Peon?
Aye.
Alderman Pindalchar?
Aye.
Alderman Felason?
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Correct, I'm sorry. Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Terry? Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Mr. S- moving right along. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda, um, what, what, it was removed, actually, my, the right spot here, it was removed from the second calendar. Okay, budget revision request GT dash one dash nineteen, a transfer from contingency transfer to tree planting.
Got a second on that, let's have discussion. Alderman Terry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm busted for asking that to be off of consent, and, and my reason there is that consent calendar is for, um, routine things, and in the light of, um, our tax increase and, and expenditures lately, I know that my constituents are very attuned to our spending, and, and this was a five thousand dollar request from contingency monies of which we really can't say no to because the money is already spent, but I think the public deserved to know, uh, that this was, uh, apparently a dire situation, uh, and that perhaps some, we may have the opportunity to hear perhaps on, are we prepared to do that?
Yep.
To, to hear why this money is being asked to be transferred out of contingency.
Sure, so we have Jackie in the audience, if you'd like to come forward, Jackie, and...
So, thank you very much.
Um, this was a situation on Twenty-Sixth Fleet Street where there was a large box elder tree in a backyard in the rear corner, so it was overhanging about five properties. Box elders grow very rapidly, they grow very large, and they have a, a large tree canopy. Um, this particular tree was starting to fall apart. It was dropping branches onto neighboring properties. Um, I have one picture with me, if you care to see it, of large branches on top of a shed and in a seating area. Thankfully, no one was sitting there when the large branches were dropping. Um, the problem originated, I believe, when neighbors started to complain in late twenty sixteen, and, um, we don't have records of everything from that period. The former city arborist, I don't know that he put everything and tracked it at the time, but, um, we do have a letter from March of twenty seventeen in which the former city arborist noted that the deadline for removal of the, uh, tree branches and cutting off the hazardous tree limbs was March the third, and had not happened yet. So he was notifying, uh, the owner that, um, having had a chance to finally inspect the tree closely because she had not been allowing him on the property to actually examine it close up, and finally it allowed that to happen, uh, he said it, the, it had become apparent that the tree had further deteriorated over the past several months, and that the tree was now deemed a nuisance tree, and it was hazardous and had to be removed in its entirety. Um, the property owner was informed that she would need a permission from the Historic Planning Preservation Commission. She did apply and was granted that permission, but then did not pursue the tree. When Bryan Adams became the city arborist, neighbors continued to complain. He visited with this property owner on several occasions. He went to the site to examine the tree. He deemed it, he agreed with the former city arborist that it was hazardous. It was in danger of toppling with severe enough storms, um, and that, um, he was surprised it had not fallen over sooner. Um, it had, the property owner was, um, claiming that the tree was healthy because it had sucker shoots springing from it, and those are the small little branches you might see come off root system or from the lower limbs of a tree. Um, the city arborist explained to her that that occurs when a tree is in peril, and it's kind of a desperate attempt to throw out a lifeline, if you will, starts to generate these little sucker shoots, but it was in no way a healthy tree. Um, she continued to say that it didn't need to be trimmed, that she had done some trimming on her own. She had talked to her neighbors about trimming. They did not give her permission to enter their property, so she offered them self-help, which they did not avail themselves of, and, um, the tree continued to deteriorate. Um, and I know that this was happening because this was going on while, uh, when I started in May, um, I was discussing this with Bryan Adams, and he was continuing to visit with the property owner to try to come to resolution, and she was refusing to trim the tree. So the city code requires that when a nuisance tree has been identified, um, that the owner or tenant, if they refuse or neglect to comply with the terms of the written notice within thirty days after receiving it, the department shall abate the nuisance, and the expense of abatement shall be a charge and leaned upon the real property on which the tree or shrub is located to be collected in the same manner and bear the same interest and penal, uh, priority as real property taxes. So this is not an option for the city. It says we shall abate the nuisance. So we are either, either in the position of leaving the tree alone and letting it topple over, branches continue to fall, and more property damage, or more severe property damage happening to neighboring properties, or even personal injury occurring, or we could even, someone could actually have been killed by this tree, and then the city would be in the position of facing, um, lawsuits for personal injury, property damage, or even a wrongful death situation. So finally, um, the property owner agreed that, uh, we could enter the property to abate the nuisance ourselves. She was informed that she would bear the expense. The only trade company that we could, uh, that would agree to do the work because other trade companies thought it was too much liability for them, or that their own employees could be injured in trying to remove the tree, was Royal Severin, uh, and it was five thousand dollars to remove the tree. Um, this is because it could not be climbed anymore, it had to be taken down very slowly and in pieces, and also it's very difficult to get any equipment back to this property. It's on Fleet Street, it's, uh, attached on one side to a home, on the other side is probably a five-foot alleyway, so you can't get any equipment in there. At one time, it was thought we might have to lift pieces out by helicopter, um, but unfortunately, um, Royal Severin was able to, um, abate the nuisance for five thousand dollars. So this, these funds came out of our General Tree Maintenance and Planting Fund. Um, we're now, the, uh, fund is almost gone, and we're not even halfway through this fiscal year, so therefore, we requested, um, that we be given funds out of the contingency fund while we have already referred this matter to the Office of Law for collection.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I think the public needed to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Jackie, thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's a motion for GT-1-19. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
Oh my God. Is there anything else for good order?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we do anything for Halloween?
Um...
Is that, do we have a meeting in two weeks?
Or go over to your house.
Meeting is adjourned.